Folks can still hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, everybody online. We've already been apologizing to folks in the room for our technical difficulties. We're going to try to make the best of this. And I guess with that, I'm going to call our July 30th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to order. It's 7:46 right now. We don't have great audio, and I'm wondering if we can abbreviate some of this. So maybe, Annalicia, if you will just, rather than doing a full roll call, can you just say who's in the room? And who's online from the planning board? Great, thank you. I think you said my name. We have seven people. So we'll go on to the approval of the minutes from July 16th.
Roll call. Lynn Davis. Think you need to shut off your volume. Lynn Davis is present. We have Derek Camerisher, who is present. And then we have Trufon, who is present online. Josh Schrader, who is absent. Dave Loomis, who is present. Peter Benson is present. Rick Hall is present online. Sean McCoy, who is absent. And Shane Morrissey, who is present.
Shane, can you hear me? Can you hear the folks online?
We can't hear Shane.
Can you hear us now? Did you hear Annalicia setting the roll call? Okay. I have to turn off my volume when she's speaking, otherwise we get feedback. Okay. So we have a quorum. We have seven members present. We're going to move on to approval of the minutes from July 16th. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion. Do we approve the minutes?
Rick has moved. Do I have a second? I have Dave seconding. Any discussion? No discussion. We'll do an up and down vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. This is going to be interesting. We're going to try to do a public comment for non-agenda items. And so if anybody from the public has anything to say, and you are on teams, please just raise your hand. Please do not criticize our technical abilities. And if you're calling in, Annalicia is going to put up the call and information. And we'll just give ourselves, again, this is public comment for items that are not on the agenda, and we're just going to give a minute here. Okay. I think I don't see any hands raised. So with that, I will close public comments for non-agenda items. Moving on to staff announcements, the only staff announcement that was noted in our pre-planning meeting is that there was a memo sent out to planning board members highlighting potentially some additional meetings that may be needed in the coming months. So if you could review that as a planning board member, that would be appreciated. I think that there was maybe an extra meeting requested in August, and this is obviously an extra meeting today. And maybe one in September also. So please review that and respond to polling results as needed. We're going to move into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a growth policy amendment and rezone of 2141 McDonald Avenue. Zoe from the city of Missoula is going to be presenting. We have a couple of folks in the audience who are interested in this in the room, and so we're going to try to set them up with a computer so they can review the slideshow. And with that, Zoe, let's try this and take it away.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, and I've got my screen shared. I don't know where it's projecting, but it is being shared. And I will just get started then. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks, everyone. My name is Zoe Walters. I'm an associate planner and current in community planning, development and innovation, and bringing forward a rezoning tonight for your consideration. So Development Services has received a request from Lynn Edens of Montana Northwest Company, representing property owners Matthew and Sarah Stevenson to rezone the property located at 2141 McDonald Avenue. The applicant requests a rezone from split zoning RT 2.7 residential and C14 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1 to C13 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1. The proposed rezoning includes a request for a targeted growth policy amendment. The parcel has a split land use designation, and they are requesting to change the portion designated as residential medium to regional commercial and services. The rezoning is contingent upon City Council approval of the growth policy amendment, as zoning must comply with the growth policy land use designations. This rezoning, if approved, will result in a standard zoning district under Tunnel 20, which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. The subject property is located at 2141 McDonald Avenue, at the intersection of McDonald Avenue and Brook Street. This location is within the South Gate Triangle neighborhood and City Council Ward 4, just south of the mall. The Bitterroot Branch Trail is located approximately 0.3 miles to the west of the subject property and can be accessed by sidewalk. Here's a closer view of the parcel outlined in red. The subject property is approximately 14,478 square feet in size and is currently vacant. Subject property is in a developed area of Missoula along Brook Street and is surrounded by single detached dwelling units to the south and east, and commercial buildings to the north and west. Subject property is located within the Midtown Master Plan area boundaries. The Midtown Master Plan was adopted as an amendment to the 2035 Armazula City Growth Policy. Shown here are the current land uses nations with the subject property outlined in red. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 Armazula City Growth Policy. The subject property currently has a split designation of regional commercial and services and residential medium high. The residential medium high land uses nation is applied to the majority of the subject property, and this area is intended for residential building types ranging in density from 12 to 23 dwelling units per acre. The use is identified for areas close to the core of the community and where city services and infrastructure are readily available. The city growth policy indicates the RT 2.7, RM 2.7, RMH, and R3 districts are the current relatable zoning districts within the residential medium high designation. The regional commercial and services designation is applied to the remainder of the subject property along the West Property Line. This is an area that accommodates uses with special land use needs and impacts. It encompasses areas sorry, it encompasses uses with large land requirements, uses uses which involve outdoor storage of merchandise, uses which are auto or regional retail related, uses which provide support service to businesses or industry, and uses which support highway travel. Any development within this area should have a well-integrated transportation network, which accommodates active transportation and provides ready access within and to adjacent developments. The city growth policy indicates the C1, C2, M1R, and OP3 districts are current relatable zoning districts within the regional commercial and services designation. Shown here is the current zoning map with the subject property outlined in red. The subject property is split zoned RT 2.7 residential and C14 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1. In the case of split zoning, in Title 20 zoning ordinance states that for existing and proposed uses and structures, the more restrictive provisions of the applicable zoning districts apply to the entire parcel. Under the current zoning, the entire parcel is treated as RT 2.7 residential. To rezone the full parcel to C13, a targeted growth policy amendment is required to extend the regional commercial and services land uses nation to the East Property Line. The applicant requests to amend the growth policy land uses nation on the subject property entirely to regional commercial and services, shown highlighted in blue. The regional commercial and services as nation allows for commercial uses serving the needs of the broader region and residential uses. Again, to rezone the full parcel to C13, a targeted growth policy amendment is required to extend the regional commercial and services land uses nation to the East Property Line. Plan amendments are reviewed to ensure consistency with goals and policies of the growth policy, state law, and any other applicable policies and standards adopted by the governing body. The growth policy states the following reasons for requesting a growth policy, a targeted growth policy amendment. In this instance, all reasons are present in the request. The first is that the plan lacks sufficient guidance to meeting emerging public needs. One emerging public need is the creation of more housing and employment opportunities. The amendment supports meeting that need by permitting more density and greater diversity of permitted housing types and permitted uses. The second reasoning is if the land uses nation, land uses nations do not support development proposals. The current land uses nation residential medium high limits potential development proposals along the Brook Street Commercial Corridor in Midtown. Due to the split designation, the applicant cannot make use of the commercial designation intended to create a commercial corridor on Brook Street. The regional commercial and services land uses nation would significantly enhance public benefits by allowing for higher density, diverse housing options, and closer integration with commercial enterprises, opportunities that are restricted under the current zoning constraints. This change would not only better meet the areas developmental needs, but also stimulate economic growth and community vitality. And lastly, if there are training conditions that warrant more relevant policies and implementation tools. The 2023 Midtown Master Plan has identified the subject property as a commercial location that can help accommodate the areas diverse households and growing population. The central location can allow for diverse housing types and create housing and employment opportunities near transit and services. So now we'll look at the growth policy amendment review criteria. These criteria address whether the proposed change is in accordance with the growth policy. This includes whether there is a need for public change, whether the change proposed is the best means for meeting that need, and whether there is a public benefit that will result from the change. The proposed growth policy amendment facilitates the provision of more diverse building types and commercial uses along a major commercial corridor for which there is a public need. The Midtown Master Plan was adopted in 2023 following a public engagement process, and the plan identifies targeted changes to meet these public needs. The growth policy amendment and associated rezoning implement the goals of the Midtown Master Plan. This growth policy amendment and subsequent rezoning of the parcel is the only means to allow more dense development and commercial uses on this site in compliance with the Midtown Master Plan. The growth policy amendment promotes greater density and a mix of housing types, which can benefit the public by lowering the cost of development through more efficient land use. The growth policy amendment supports compact development and mixed-use developments to reduce costly expansion of infrastructure. And the growth policy amendment facilitates expansion of businesses in the Midtown Core that should support a higher intensity of a variety of uses. Closer proximity to commercial activity may allow residents to rely less on car trips and reduce car trips to meet their daily needs. The growth policy amendment would create public benefit by implementing the housing, community design, and economic health goals of the Armazula 2035 Growth Policy. Shown here is the proposed zoning map with the subject property outlined in red. The hatch marks designate the design excellence overlay that is to remain. As stated earlier, City Council can only approve the rezoning following council approval of the targeted growth policy amendment. If the targeted growth policy amendment is approved, the applicant requests to rezone from RT 2.7 residential to sorry, and C14, could split zone, C14 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1 to C13 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1. The C1 neighborhood, the C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district complies with the growth policy as it is a current relatable district to the regional commercial and services land use destination. So the city growth policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development in the urban core where infrastructure already exists and promotes mixed use, compact development, and enhanced connectivity while limiting sprawl and promoting efficient use of existing infrastructure. The proposed C1 zoning would increase density and permitted uses in an area with existing infrastructure, access to jobs and services, transit, sidewalks, and bike lanes. There are five-foot curbside sidewalks existing along McDonald Avenue and Brook Street. Bus stop serving Mountain Line Route 7 is located approximately 500 feet east of the subject property. Mountain Line Routes 1, 2, 6, and 8 can also be accessed within a half mile at South Gate Mall. In the Bitterroot Branch Trail, a city maintained shared use path that can be used to access downtown and other parts of the Missoula is located approximately 0.3 miles to the west of the subject property. There is no designated bike lane on McDonald Avenue, and there is a painted shoulder to delineate a bike lane on Brook Street. The subject property is served by city water and sewer services. Water mains exist adjacent to the subject property in McDonald Avenue, and sewer mains exist on Brook Street. New structures will be required to connect to city sewer and water at the time of development, and the parcel is currently served by city fire and police. So here's a comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. The existing RT 2.7 zoning district allows for detached houses, lotline houses, two-unit townhouses, and a two-unit house. The proposed C13 zoning district would allow for additional building types, including all single-purpose residential building types, vertical mixed-use buildings, mixed-use buildings, and group living. The existing RT 2.7 zoning district, which has a minimum parcel area per unit of 2,700 square feet, would allow for five dwelling units. And in the proposed C13 zoning district, the minimum area, parcel area per unit is 1,000 square feet. And so with the 14,478 square foot property, this would allow up to 14 dwelling units. The existing RT 2.7 zoning district requires a front setback of 20 feet, 5 feet on interior sides, and 10 feet on street sides. The proposed C13 zoning district does not have setbacks unless the parcel abuts a residential zoning district. And the subject property does abut the RT 2.7 zoning district to the east and south. And a build-to zone of the design excellence overlay supersedes the front and street side setbacks of the RT 2.7 and C13 zoning districts. And the design excellence overlay would require new structures to be cited at the corner of Brook Street and McDonald Avenue, and the building must be located within 5 to 10 feet from both of those streets. The subject property abuts an R-zone parcel to the east and to the south, therefore the required interior side setback is 5 feet. And corner parcels do not have a rear setback, and therefore a side setback is applicable to the southern property line. The subject property does not abut in our district to the west, and therefore there is no setback requirement along the West Property Line. And the design excellence overlay does not apply to residentially zoned property. So currently, the overlay is not implemented at the subject property. And with the rezoning, the requirements of the design excellence, of design excellence will apply to the property. The maximum building height permitted in the existing RT 2.7 district is 35 feet, and that would increase to 65 feet with the proposed C13. For development in the proposed C13 district, it is required that parcels abutting our districts that have a maximum building height of 35 feet or less, the maximum building height at the point of the required minimum setback is 35 feet. That height may be increased above 35 feet, up to 1 foot for each 6 inches of building setback or upper floor step back. The abutting RT 2.7 residential zoning district has a maximum height of 35 feet. So staff recommend the 65-foot maximum height of the C13 zoning district due to the size of the parcel and the abutting residential development. However, all nearby commercially zoned properties on Brook Street have a maximum height of 125 feet. The proposed C13 zoning district would allow additional permitted uses provided in Title 20. Some of these uses include animal service, sales and grooming, shelter aborting, business sports service, communication service establishments, eating and drinking establishments, restaurants, entertainment and spectator sports, hotel, warehousing, and winery. So moving into the rezoning review criteria, staff recommendation is based on the review criteria provided in the Title 20 zoning ordinance. If the growth policy amendment is approved, the proposed rezoning complies with the growth policy and focus inward objectives as the C13 district is a current relatable district of the regional commercial and services land uses nation. The proposed rezoning supports the goals of the 2023 Midtown Master Plan by allowing for commercial uses along Brook Street, along the Brook Street Commercial Corridor. The proposed C13 zoning district would advance equity goals of the 2023 Midtown Master Plan by allowing for more diverse housing and commercial development that can serve the whole community. The Midtown Core should support a higher intensity of variety uses, particularly on major corridors such as Brook Street. The subject property can be served by sewer, water, motorized, and non-motorized facilities. The reasoning considers the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems because the property is within the Missoula Urban Transportation District. It's served by public transit and is located on a street where active transportation infrastructure exists, and is located approximately 0.3 miles from the Bitterroot Branch Trail. Any development within the regional commercial and services area should have a well-integrated transportation network, which accommodates active transportation and provides ready access within and to adjacent developments. The subject property is within a quarter mile of a bus stop and existing multimodal transportation infrastructure, making the property suitable for an increase in density. The proposed C13 zoning district would allow for additional commercial and industrial uses to serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. The regional commercial and service land uses nation intends for commercial services serving the needs of the broader region. The reasoning promotes compatible urban growth because it helps implement the focus inward approach of the city growth policy and allows for increased density where services and infrastructure already exist. The reasoning promotes compatible urban growth because the additional permitted uses allow a neighborhood commercial area to serve adjacent neighborhoods. And additionally, the reasoning is compatible with the commercially zoned Taco Bell located on the same block and all other nearby parcels abutting Brook Street are zoned commercial, promoting compatible urban growth. The rezoning will promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare by providing for residential and commercial uses in an area, sorry, access to public sewer, water, emergency services, streets, schools, and other urban services. Future development must comply with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, which ensures protection of public health, safety, and welfare. The rezoning will not impact provision of light and air because the RT 2.7 and C13 zoning districts, when abutting in our zone parcel, have the same side setbacks. The parcel abuts right of way along two property lines, mitigating the impact of increased height. This rezoning encourages the most appropriate use of the land because it would allow for development as envisioned by the growth policy and Midtown Master Plan. The rezoning to C13 is suitable for the subject property and considers the character of the district because it is adjacent to commercial uses to the north and west. C13 is a commercial zoning district consisting with surrounding commercial districts and uses along Brook Street. And the uses permitted in C13 zoning district are suitable for design, within the design excellence overlay. The zoning amendment is a map amendment and not a text amendment. There is no change to the Title 20 zoning ordinance that would correct an error or inconsistency. However, the rezoning does correct split zoning. The rezoning is in the best interest of the city because the rezoning implements the recommendations of the growth policy for areas designated as regional, commercial, and services. So moving into the motions, at this time, so there's two motions. The first one is for the resolution. At this time, staff recommend, the planning board recommend, City Council adopt a resolution to amend the 2035 Armazula City Growth Policy Land Use Designation from residential medium high to regional commercial and services of the subject property based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. And at this time, staff recommend, planning board recommends, City Council adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2141 McDonald Avenue from split zoning RT 2.7 residential and C14 with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1 to C13 neighborhood commercial with a design excellence overlay corridor typology 1, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and I'm not entirely sure if the applicant is online or in the room, but yes, staff, we're here.
Great, thanks, Zoe. You guys are not the applicant?
No.
Okay, great. And I'm assuming the applicant is not online? The applicant is in the room, okay. Is there anything that you wanted to say? Okay, and sorry, sir, your name for the record? Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest Company for the record, doesn't have anything to say, and is here for questions if needed. Okay, any clarifying questions from planning board members before we do public comment? Clarifying questions? Not seeing anybody? Okay, with
Do you have a question?
Lynn has a clarifying question.
Okay, so you said the setbacks are by, is it 10 feet from Brooks and McDonald? And is there a five-foot sidewalk there now, or there will be?
So there's currently a five-foot sidewalk along McDonald Avenue and Brook Street. The current setback under RT 2.7 for that front setback would be 20 and 10 feet from the side street of Brooks. But the proposed design excellence applies, and it actually has a build-to zone, so the building would have to be within 5 to 10 feet along both McDonald and Brooks.
Okay, so you'd have the five-foot sidewalk and then the five-foot to the building, basically?
Yes, the setback. Yeah, from the property line is the setback.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Okay, not seeing any other clarifying questions. So with that, we're going to move into public comments. So we might have some folks in the room, but we're also going to hopefully have Annalicia post the call and information. And if you are on teams and would like to make a comment, please just use the raise hand function. If you're calling in, I believe it's star five to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself. With that, I'm going to go silent and see if anybody has a public comment.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Clark, and I am a resident of the proposed area. My husband and I are here because, as I mentioned, we are residents of that area, and we would like to request that the rezoning request be rejected, and I'll give you multiple reasons why. We have been living in that area for 15 years and putting developing that area that's being proposed in the way that it is would would only promote chaos. Let me explain why. We already have McDonald's across the street from us, which is already a traffic and a parking hazard. From what I understand from this proposal is that a 14-apartment, five-story building or anything close to that be put in that area, we're looking at a parking hazard, unbelievable. We already have a hard time with individuals parking on the street in front of our house. There's no way you're going to be able to put enough parking in that one little parcel that's going to satisfy everyone. McDonald's has their employees park on the street to save the parking for their customers, which in turn already impedes on us residents who have trouble parking. Not to mention, we're talking, you could put anyone in those Not to mention, we're talking, you could put anyone in those, if it's apartments, any one of those units, and then we don't know what type of neighborhood, you know, esteem we're going to come up with. We have multiple people who have been there and have lived in that area since the sixties. We've been there for fifteen years. We have, the majority of the individuals in that area are older individuals. And we already drive our vehicles daily. That that would become a complete nightmare. Not to mention, I have to go out to McDonald's at least four times a week to tell people to calm down. Because eleven, twelve o'clock at night, cars are screaming up and down the street, people are standing outside, partying, and in the summertime, it's worse. I propose that this be rejected because I live there and I know what it's going to do and I come from a big city. I was surrounded by that growing up, so I don't think it would be in the best interest of the neighborhood. It may be for commercial property and it may bring income to them, but what about those of us who live there?
Thank you, Dawn. Everybody was able to hear that? Okay? Great.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Let's give it another minute here.
My husband has a question.
Comment, but it would be more of a question. My, I just had one concern mainly, and that is along similar lines to my wife. Are there any development scenarios in which subsequent increased need for parking would not be contained within the boundaries of the developed property in the form of off-street parking?
Before we take the mic away, yeah.
Dan Clark.
Shane, would you like me to address that?
Not yet.
Okay.
Give ourselves another thirty seconds here to see if anybody online has any comments or questions.
It looks like there's some questions in the chat.
If you have put a question in the chat, I'd ask that you raise your hand and say it online for the record. I don't believe that we can use the chat as a form of public comment.
Hey Shane, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, this is Karen Hughes and the the person in the chat is named Lisa. I don't know her last name, but she says her microphone's not working. So she can't speak, apparently. The question is that she's wondering what is being proposed to be built apartments or businesses or what, if anyone knows that information. And I don't know what her last name is. Hopefully she'll write it in the chat and I can say it.
Yeah, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind putting your last name in the chat and we can ask that question of the applicant. That being said, this is a growth policy amendment and a zoning request, and oftentimes that type of information is not known or not shared. In that since it hasn't even been approved yet, we don't know what's going to go there. But we can ask the question. Uh, any other questions? Comments?
And just for the record, her name is Lisa Corgan. And she thanked you.
Lisa Corgan. Great, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and we're going to open ourselves up for discussion amongst planning board members. Does anybody want to kick us off? Or should I just ask some questions? Lynn, go ahead.
I would just like to hear about the parking question and if the parking is to be contained on the lot or would it include off-street parking?
So any parking with the proposed development would be required onsite and it would follow title twenty parking requirements, which is broken down by use classification. If they can't, for whatever reason, meet a parking requirement, they wouldn't be able to have that use to that extent. So they would have to, you know, they'd have to meet the parking requirements in title twenty in order to have the intended use, proposed use there.
So just to clarify that, so yes, in theory, they could build five stories and, you know, this fourteen-unit thing. That being said, they can only do that if they could fit the proper number of parking spaces on the site with that five-story building. Right, right. So that that oftentimes the parking will limit the size of the building that can actually go on the site in reality. Is that, is that a fair assessment, Zoe?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Rick.
Which I think mine is related to that. So what McDonald's is doing, which is having their employees park off-site, they're not really supposed to do that, correct?
That's correct, correct. All of the customer and employee parking should be provided onsite based on the declassification of restaurant.
I would like to add, this is Alex Branley with Development Services, that the design excellence overlay does have some parking reductions based on different criteria. So it's not utilized too often, but it is, just to throw it out there, yes, they have to meet the title twenty parking requirements. Generally, that is an onsite requirement, and then there are some potential parking reductions that they could implement. Just wanted to let that be known as well.
Can you tell us what a parking reduction might look like?
The the common one that you can see is a transit-oriented one. That there's certain criteria we have built into our code, so they'd have to meet those criteria. And there's kind of different scenarios, so I haven't looked at this site specifically in relation to all of them, nor have they proposed any kind of parking reduction. I just wanted to to point that out that that is, is an option in our code within the design excellence overlay.
Other discussions or are we ready to have a motion?
I understand that there is, you know, the parking onsite, which might, which would in and of itself be required for, obviously, the individuals who are renting or whatever the property. But what about individuals who, I don't know, just say, just, let's just say a multi-unit rental building is being put there, commercial aspect because it's owned by a different company, renting out to individuals. Now the individuals have to park on that property. But what about the people who come to see them? You know what I mean? It's like we already have a parking influx as it is. I mean, if if you have fourteen units and each apartment has three or four people coming to see them, where are these individuals going to park on the street? Which we already have a hard time parking.
Yeah, Zoe, did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that.
Would you mind responding to that, please?
Yeah, so I mean, as far as when it comes to development review for these projects, we are using title twenty zoning code based on the proposed use to determine the parking requirements. Entry parking is, you know, an option for wherever there is, wherever that's permitted based on the city. So that's not something that zoning can necessarily control. So we're looking at the onsite development and the corresponding parking requirements. Is that a fair answer, Alex? Anything maybe to add?
Yeah, I think we hear what you're saying. Our code doesn't build out for an apartment with three people living in it if it's a three-bed, two-bath, you know, kind of situation. In the commercial and business zoning districts, our code, if it's a multifamily structure, requires one parking space per dwelling unit. So it's not built-in caveats of really unique individual case by case. It's if you have fourteen dwelling units, we're looking at our code title twenty requires fourteen off-street parking spaces, and so we're going to look at your plans and make sure that those are accounted for on top of landscaping and design excellence features and other things like that.
Can I make a motion?
Uh, hold on one second.
One point five per unit, which could be approximately twenty-one spots, and that would be for the individuals living there, like I had said. But my concern is, yeah, the the people who are who are utilizing the space located at the lot is one thing. You can have the off-street parking. That I understand, but what I'm thinking of are the individuals.
I understand and we're, yeah. So let me just try to reframe where we are. We're apologies, but we are done with public comment. We have, we we hear you. And the the question at hand is, is whether or not we should be allowing for the growth targeted growth policy adjustment and the zoning change. And I think, and I just want to make sure that you've understood staff, you know, basically what the what the review criteria is, is the title twenty.
Just wanted to voice my concern.
And we really do appreciate you coming down and bearing with us here today. This is obviously not going the way that anybody would have liked. So appreciate, appreciate all that. Are there any other comments before we entertain a motion? Or, Rick, were you going to propose a motion? Zoe, do you think that you could maybe put the motions back up on the screen, please?
Yep. So the first one here is for the resolution for the growth policy.
Got it. I make a motion that we recommend the city council adopt the resolution to amend the twenty thirty-five Armazula City Growth Policy Land Use Designation from residential medium-high to regional commercial and services on a portion of parcel A of an amended plat of Carline Edition Block Seventy, a portion of Lot One and tract A COS six four four one as shown on exhibit A based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law on the staff report.
Thanks, Rick. Do we have a second for our first motion of the evening? Peter has seconded. And from there, we'll move into discussion if anybody wants to tip their hand as to how they feel about this and discuss why they feel the way they do. Does anybody want to kick us off? Does anybody want to talk to this?
So I will try.
Uh, Dave's going to kick us off and we're going to test to see if you guys can hear him.
The issue already occurred when the growth policy split-zoned this issue. It's already planned for one use, but split-zoned, and so this is in effect putting it back together. So the real issue already happened, and that's why I support this. Just for the record, that that's why their applicants are putting this back together. The decision on density, intensity uses has already been made.
Is it, were folks at home able to hear that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Rick, go ahead.
Now I gotta turn down my my volume because turn it up for Dave. You know, I feel the pain of people that live in the South Gate area. There are disadvantages and advantages. I just spent some time with someone that lived in the area and they loved it because they could walk to everything and they had so many services available to them. But I have lived in an area near industrial development. And, you know, the pressure for develop that this is a a prime commercial lot. I mean, we're being asked to to amend the land use designation because I don't think choosing the lowest designation, anybody would really want to put residents there. But who knows? But it's definitely commercial property and anyone that's within a block of Brooks, I certainly understand their concerns. It's a busy street. It's a busy area. And that's why businesses are placed on arterials that people can access. And I wish, I I hope businesses don't have their employees parking outside of their business. If they do, I I don't know what the resolution is of that and who they would talk to, but I'm for it. I think it's the split zoning isn't the correct zone. I think the highest designation, which was the commercial was the designation that's right for that location, so that's about all I have.
Peter?
I pretty much agree with Rick and his assessment of the situation. And I think that the diversity of opportunities for people who in that area is understood from previous use, and it seems to me that it's a continuation of the same kind of growth policy that we've talked about for quite a while. So I do support the resolution. Though I I do understand the policing of parking and transportation around there and the difficulties of that. And at some point, I'd be curious to find out how we do address issues like the wrong, like the McDonald's parking issues.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Derek? Do you?
Come in. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I'd I'd like to echo my colleagues and also acknowledge there were other public comments that came in with addressing concerns about parking. Parking is is legitimately always going to be a concern when we have, you know, impact and I guess more people in in an area that, you know, people are otherwise used to. So, but for a number of reasons consistent with like the Midtown Master Plan, I think there's a lot of reasons why this type of development is consistent with the growth policy and also why I'm going to choose to support this.
Thanks, Derek. Not seeing anybody else jumping out, so I'll just give my two cents. Agree with what's been said. Totally agree with what Dave said. This feels to be, seems to be an error with having the split zoning in the first place. So I tend to support this. The commercial frontage along Brook Street appears as if it was always intended to be commercial, and so we're just simply moving that boundary line you know, to to the property line at this point. So I intend to support this also. you know, to the property line at this point. So I intend to support this also. With that, and really do want to thank, you know, folks for coming in and spending your evening and bearing with us through through everything. It's great that you guys have chosen to to come out here and make your voices be heard. And we honestly really do appreciate it. So thank you. With that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call a vote? Lynn Davis? Derek Camrischer? Toon Pham?
Yes.
Dave Wumis?
Yes.
Peter Benson?
Yes.
Rick Hall?
Yes, yes.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
And it is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to yeah, Rick, would you take our away or second motion?
Yep, absolutely. Recommend the city adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2141 McDonald Avenue and described as parcel A of an amended plat of Carline Edition Block 70 of portion of Lot 1 and tract A COS 6441 located in Section 32 Township 13 North, Range 19 West PMM from split zoning RT 2.7 Residential, two-unit townhouse, and C1-4 Neighborhood Commercial with the Design Excellence Overlay corridor topology 1 to C1-3 Neighborhood Commercial with the Design a Design Excellence Overlay corridor topology 1 based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Thanks, Rick. Do we have a second? Peter, seconds? Any discussion? Lynn has a discussion topic?
What comes to my mind is the Design Excellence Overlay, and if it's necessary, or can we amend the motion to not include the overlay because the overlay sounds like it's reducing, it's gonna further reduce the parking that's already.
I don't believe Zoe might need to weigh in here, but I, this is I don't believe that we can just remove the overlay from a, from a parcel. The overlay applies to the Brook Street corridor in this instance, I believe. And conditioning this piece of property and changing the zoning on it does not seem correct, but maybe Zoe or Alex?
Yeah, that's correct. So the Design Excellence Overlay applies to this full commercial corridor of Brook Street. And while there is a, you know, options for reducing parking, it does offer a lot of other benefits for design standards and pedestrian accessibility to the site. So yeah, it would provide additional benefits as well. So those are my comments.
And we can't just remove it, correct?
No. So if we were to remove that from this motion, we'd have to restart the the whole process, the whole application process and public hearing.
Well, and I'm not sure even necessarily that is possible, given it is on the Brooks corridor that is fully within the the type hole as you want a design excellence. We don't it, Design Excellence doesn't apply to the our zone parcels, but it would very much still apply to this parcel. We wouldn't even if we kind of redid this process, it wouldn't be an outcome of no Design Excellence Overlay. It will be there because it's right on Brook Street.
Thank you.
Peter has a question.
I have a question. I know from years ago, we were concerned about parking on the hip strip and just how difficult it was to support the businesses in in the area. What? If we if our concern about parking becomes significant enough, how do we address it? Who do we bring our, I mean, how do we bring it to anybody's attention? Or how do we address the issue?
I think that this is maybe perhaps a larger policy issue that is, you know, being discussed with code reform. So it's not so much Design Excellence or even the commercial zoning district. It's about how we are assessing parking needs. So I think maybe bringing it to our code reform team would be a great place.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none, may we do a roll call?
Roll call vote? Lynn Davis?
Lynn was no.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Just for folks at home, I just want to make sure Lynn was yes.
Derek Camrischer? Toon Pham?
Yes, yeah.
Dave Wumis? Peter Benson?
Yes.
Rick Hall?
Yes.
Shane Morrissey?
Yes.
And it is unanimous, the motion passes.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Can I ask a question before we go on?
Go for it, Rick. If it's quick.
Is there a mechanism for neighbors to get permit parking in their area when they're in a, like the university district has, for instance?
So currently there is not. University District is within the Parking Commission's jurisdiction, and they have a permit program there, but that doesn't exist, to my knowledge, anywhere else in the city.
And you have to pay for the permit. We used to live there.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. All right. Thank you very much. Our second hearing of the evening is the rezone of 1200, 1224, 1228, 1244, 1136, and 1138 Montana Street rezoning. And Alex, Senior Planner, City of Missoula, will be giving our presentation. Just one second, Alex.
No problem.
Are you guys, you guys are here for this? Do you guys want to come up so you can see the slideshow? It's totally up to you guys. We're just trying to get organized in the room so that folks here can hear. Appreciate you guys hanging with us this evening. Alex, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, thank you. Can you see the screen and hear me? Yes, okay. Perfect. Well, good evening. My name is Alex Bramla, and I'm a planner with the city here this evening because Development Services received a request from Craig Schaefer with 406 Engineering on behalf of the property owners to rezone 1200, 1224, 1228, 1244, 1136, and 1138 Montana Street from R20 Residential to B2-2 Community Business. This rezoning will result in a standard Title 20 zoning district which cannot be conditioned. Standard zoning districts must apply the same requirements to all parcels within the same zoning district equally. The properties are located east of Russell Street, north of Wyoming Street, and south of the Clark Fork River, and are within the Riverfront Neighborhood Council and City Council Ward 3. Here is a closer view of the subject properties outlined in red, which have frontage on Montana, Inez, and California Streets, which are all functionally classified as local streets. These properties collectively are around 53,600 square feet in size, which accretes to about 1.23 acres and contain several detached houses. The surrounding properties contain detached houses, two-unit townhouses, multi-dwelling building, and warehouses. The applicable regional plan is our Missoula City Growth Policy 2035 and recommends a land use designation of community mixed use, which promotes a broad range of functions, including retail, education, financial institutions, professional and personal services, offices, residences, and general service activities. These areas are integrated with main transportation corridors, including active transportation systems to facilitate efficient travel opportunities. The current relatable zoning districts within this land use designation are C14, C24, and M1R-2. These zoning districts are intended for high-intensity commercial uses servicing general community needs intermixed with high-density residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject properties to B2-2 Community Business. This zoning district, while not a current relatable zoning district, does allow for a range of retail, office, and high-density residential uses consistent with the growth policy. Staff recommended the B2-2 zoning district to the applicant to reduce the potential impacts of high-intensity uses on the surrounding developed area while allowing for the creation of housing or mixed-use development in accordance with the growth policy. The growth policy calls for a focus inward approach to encourage infill development and promote enhanced connectivity. The design section of the growth policy encourages building where there is existing infrastructure. The subject properties are served by city water and sewer and are currently served by city fire and police. The housing section describes the focus inward approach to development as one that provides opportunities by designating appropriate areas for higher density and housing near existing infrastructure and services. The growth policy states such development has added benefits, including decreasing household expenses like transportation. The safety wellness section of the growth policy encourages healthy lifestyle by promoting a complete active transportation network to increase safety for all transportation systems. As you can see, the mountain line 2 is located approximately 0.2 miles west of the properties at North Russell Street and River Road. The Milwaukee and Riverfront Trails are roughly 800 feet from the properties. Silver Park is a quarter mile to the east, and McCormick Park is three quarters miles to the east. The properties are also located within the Wyoming Street neighborhood of the Missoula Downtown Master Plan. The Downtown Master Plan recognizes that Wyoming Street neighborhood area would need to be rezoned to accommodate missing middle housing and a mix of uses. The Downtown Master Plan recognizes a portion of the Wyoming Street neighborhood is within the special flood hazard area, stating that any future development within the floodplain would need to include a floodplain study and review by appropriate regulatory agencies. The subject properties are within the 1% annual chance floodplain. For future residential development, a possible approach is to elevate structures two feet above base flood elevation. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as BEMA, hydrologic modeling for this area assumes future infill development and allows for infill while mitigating impacts to surrounding development. Here's the current zoning map where you can see the subject properties are zoned R20. The surrounding zoning districts include B2-2 Community Business, R20 Residential, RT 2.7, R80, and the Millsite Special District. Here's the proposed zoning map where the applicant is requesting to rezone to the B2-2, which is a mixed-use low-intensity business district allowing for one dwelling unit per every 1,000 square feet of parcel area. So as we can see, here is a standard comparison between the existing and proposed zoning districts. If approved, the allowed density will increase from two total dwelling units allowed to a maximum of roughly 53 dwelling units for the entire project area. There is no setback requirement for B-zoned parcels that aren't abutting R-zone parcels, which is the case here except for the easternmost parcel, which is addressed 1136 Montana Street. Future development on 1136 Montana Street would need to match the actual setback for the abutting R-zone parcel, but not greater than the required setback as indicated in Title 20. And then finally, the maximum building height would increase to 50 feet for parcels that aren't abutting R-zone parcels, which again is the case here except for the easternmost parcel at 1136 Montana Street. Future development at 1136 Montana Street would have a maximum allowed height of 35 feet at the point of the required R-zoning setback. Then they could increase that height above 35 feet up to one vertical foot for every six inches of building setback. That's recommendations based on the review criteria provided in Title 20 zoning ordinance. To summarize, the proposed rezoning complies with the growth policy focus inward in the Downtown Master Plan. It is served by city services and future development would be required to meet city ordinances. The rezoning considers the location and character of the property, which has easy access to urban infrastructure and services. The zoning amendment is a map amendment and not a text amendment, so there is no change to the Title 20 zoning ordinance that would correct an error or inconsistency. And lastly, the rezoning is the best interest of the city because it implements the recommendations of the growth policy for areas designated community mixed use and the Missoula Downtown Master Plan while maintaining compatibility with the existing development. With that being said, the recommended motion is for the planning board to recommend the adoption of an ordinance to rezone southern properties from R20 Residential to B2-2 Community Business. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Alex. Do you guys have a presentation or anything that you want to say?
No, Craig Schaefer, 406 Engineering, here for questions. To say it's been kind of a long road getting here. The the theme of the neighborhood is, as you saw on the map there, going B2. I will also say this is the most intimate planning board hearing I've ever been a part of, but been a long road. I think, you know, the stars are aligned. Alex's report is pretty straightforward and and we're here to answer any further questions as the discussion continues.
Great. Thanks, Craig. Any clarifying questions before we move into public comments? Derek has a clarifying question before.
No, I'm on the mic. Yeah, so just what do we have? How many addresses? Six different addresses? Just to clarify, are they all owned by the same owner? No, it's mixed. So the rezone is going to, you know, cross different property boundaries? And is this kind of like a collective organized effort of different property owners and neighbors? No, 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 please. That's my, that's my question.
Yeah, hold on one second. Okay. Finish your question then.
Yeah, so actually, let me, yes. And I think you're hearing me. I'm just kind of curious about how this arrangement works. And it sounds like this has been a work in progress. And so I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, I think. Craig Schaefer, 406 Engineering. The nature of zoning is not to pick, you know, it's not intended to pick a single parcel and say we're going to treat this differently than all the surrounding areas. So so even back, and I'll continue and you can jump in if I miss anything here, Doug. Even going back to where you saw there was about a half a block just to the north of this property that was previously zoned B2-2 that was done about a year and a half ago. They looked at rezoning the entire block at that time, and it didn't work out for a number of factors. So we'll keep us here way too late to discuss all those details. But the nature of the zoning is to pick an area that you want to behave a certain way. And from the beginning, Doug, the applicant, the main applicant, has worked with his neighbors and the other people on the block, and now the folks across the street to to get this more comprehensive picture. So he's brought all the neighbors on Block 7 of Eddie Edition together, and also the the new owners across California Street to try to make more of a comprehensive B2-2 zoning area that matches the zoning to the south. And Alex probably has more experience into this overall zoning than I do, but the Sommel district is kind of seems to be driving more dense development from the east as well. So it's this it's this interface of R20, which is very spacious, open, almost rural zoning with the more dense development that we see in the, what's becoming more of the core of downtown. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Peter has a clarifying question.
Yeah, if this was a private dwellings, we'd be concerned about a density increase of 20-fold. So I'm just curious about the why is it a good thing in commercial real estate for density to be that much higher than it was?
If you like.
What do you rather?
I would just say potential major density increase. There's still the possibility for single family residential development to happen within B two dash two zoning.
Okay.
Uh, to that please, so the other uh, property owners across California Street on I think it's eleven thirty eight Montana Street, um, Fallon Tree. Uh, and us, and we own about half of the block of the north side of block seven, Eddie Edition. We have no intent of going to that degree. And we've provided a site plan that shows when we put an enormous amount of energy just into the site plan and getting to here. Um, we're not, there's, I mean, sure. It could happen. We're not going to do that. And I have full faith in uh, Fallon Tree that they have no interest in that either. And they also have a site plan which shows a kind of modest increase over what's currently allowed. That meets B two two, but doesn't go to the uh, sort of extreme. Yeah, that's digital. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any other clarifying questions, so we're gonna move into our public comment period. Um, you know, Alicia, if you would be so kind to put our call in information. Doesn't look like there's anybody in the room, so we'll just spend uh, with that. Oh, I'm gonna open up a public comment period. And uh, we'll just give ourselves a minute here to see if anybody online has any comments. I'm not seeing anybody online right now. Uh, so with that, we'll close our public comment period and open ourselves up for questions from planning board members. Does anybody want to kick us off? Go ahead, Lynn.
That was my question. What what is going on with the one property owner who is not part of the group, I guess?
I'd care to speak for them, but would you like for me?
I would like your, yeah, you sound.
Um, so their residence would not even exist had it not been for a previous rezone that came before or for um, about six years ago, seven years ago. Is that right, Craig? In that range?
Mm hmm.
Um, and I can't, again, I can't speak for them, but we were told by the residents of my block, the to the west of them, by I Meg, who's doing the sidewalks and water main this summer and fall, that traffic, which was one of this person's comments, because I read the comments, that we were definitively told it's going to dramatically increase because of the mill site development with no relation to anything we have proposed. Um, I would say that what uh, Fallon Tree and what my wife and I have proposed, that those developments will not impact traffic into the mill site, thereby through their property at all. I mean, no one's going to uh, live on those properties and want to go that direction. They're gonna go the other way. And with regard to property values, I can't really speak to that. Except to say that we're redeveloping and you could sort of subjectively suggest that we might actually be given what's there now, increasing uh, you know, subjective property values. And and that that's what I remember in the comments anyway.
Any other questions from planning board members?
No question.
Uh, we've got a statement from Dave.
Comment about the site that has been pretty much ignored over the years by the city. So but and everybody knows this and has not been really at a plan for it. So city is already through the growth policy uh, designated designated as a community mixed use. And um, I think that's appropriate. This this rezoning is appropriate to that. This is the right location. It fits within the growth policy. And that, so I'm just cut it short and say, that's why I support it. This is appropriate at this time.
Other comments from planning board members before we entertain a motion? Questions or comments? Go ahead, Peter.
I continue to have some reservations about the density increase. And I appreciate what um, what what we've heard. But I think the fact that we did have one B twenty two, red B two two uh, change in the last couple of years means we put a sort of a toe into the water of increasing densities. One of the things that we have paid attention to when we've increased density and infilling was how fast is that infilling happening and worrying about that kind of thing? We can't just change a community that is, you know, one home bedroom community and fill it with apartment buildings. Um, we felt that that was too, you know, it can be too fast and uh, too too much. So I have some concerns about that, but I don't have any nothing substantial in what I've heard scares me enough to say no. Um, but if anybody else has concerns about it and can, I'd love to hear it.
Thanks, Peter. Does anybody else have any questions before we move to a motion? We can have a discussion after the motion. Alex, would you mind putting the motion up? Anybody want to take this one on?
Sure, I can do it.
Peter's gonna take it on.
Recommended motion. Planning board recommend the adoption of an ordinance to rezone the subject properties located at twelve hundred, twelve twenty four, twelve twenty eight, twelve forty four, eleven thirty six, and eleven thirty eight Montana Street, legally described as lots thirteen dash twenty four in block seven and lots thirteen dash sixteen in the west, half of lot seventeen in block eight of Eddie Edition, located in section twenty one township thirteen north, range nineteen west, P M M from R twenty residential to B two dash two community business, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have a second? Lynn has seconded. Uh, and with that, we'll open up discussion. Uh, anybody want to kick us off? Maybe I'll kick us off. I totally agree with you, Dave. Um, this this seems to be the right thing. Uh, the Sawmill District um, is developing right now uh, pretty intensely uh, just to the east. Uh, seems to be the right thing. The neighborhood, um, we've gone through these floodplain questions over and over and you guys are well versed in um, all that stuff. Um, the neighborhood is the the one to twenty thousand. Um, it seems insane uh, in an urban, in even a remotely urban environment. Um, it's like these lots would are completely undevelopable with that um, zoning uh, right now. So, yeah, it is a twenty fold increase, but it's I I don't think that's actually the way that I even look at it, to be completely honest with you, because um, I don't know how big the lots are, but they're not, they're just, they're not twenty thousand square feet each, certainly. Um, so um, and and I I do appreciate, you know, to Derek's point earlier that um, we're we're not, this isn't one landowner. This is, you know, a group of landowners coming together and pooling the resources to actually get the entire block at that, you know, at this point, um, brought up to the same level of development. Um, and I remember having that discussion uh, when the north half of this uh, block was uh, rezoned several years ago, so or a couple of years ago. So um, appreciate the effort. I intend to support this. Um, and uh, um, see if anybody else has any comments for our discussion. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I think as you pointed out, you know, we want the highest best use and right now it's a uh, I'm sorry for to the landowners, but it's just a shaggy, empty lot. So um, I I think it's appropriate as well.
Uh, go ahead, Tune.
Yeah, I just want to agree with um, with what you said. Um, um, well, a lot of other folks is like, uh, and I also wanted to point out that uh, the the slide, the the satellite view is sorely out of date. And I think it kind of gave the wrong impression of what that area is today. It's obviously quite developed and I think this is an appropriate thing uh, to, you know, to continue to build out in that area. So I intend to support this as well.
Any other comments before we move to a vote? Alicia, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote. Lynn Davis.
Yes.
Derek Canwisher. Tune Pham.
Yes, yes.
Dave Loomis.
Yes.
Peter Benson.
Yes.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Shane Morrissey.
Yes.
And it is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Um, thanks for hanging with us.
Thanks for letting us hang in your table, Rick.
You know, it's not always this intimate here, but uh, appreciate you guys hanging in there with us. Um, Yep. Uh, we got one more hearing tonight.
Here, are you online?
I am. Sure.
So we've got uh, Tim here, uh, the Granite Peak RV subdivision. Tim Worley, senior planner, um, planning, development, and sustainability of the county.
Thank you.
Um, and you're gonna use your audio?
I think I can talk loud enough.
Okay.
That I probably need to do it that way.
Um, folks online, if you're having trouble hearing, Tim, just uh, speak up real quick, please. Uh, and once he starts talking here in a minute.
All right, again, yes, this is Granite Peak RV Park subdivision. It's actually a fifty space expansion of the existing Granite Peak RV Park out at the Y. This is a proposal by Dave Swisher and Lolo Peak LLC. Again, for a fifty percent expansion of Granite Peak RV Park. This amounts to fifty spaces and it will be in two distinct phases, which are shown in this graphic. This is on the west side of the current Granite Peak RV Park. This property is located on Thoroughbred Lane, northwest of the Y. Again, this is the former Jellystone Park, which was approved in nineteen ninety four for one hundred and seventeen RV park spaces. This formerly was an unzoned parcel, but it's been zoned neighborhood residential since July first, twenty twenty two. Neighborhood residential does not permit RV parks. But the existing park is a legal nonconforming use and legal nonconforming uses may be expanded up to fifty percent in this zoning. Uh, if you go through a special exception, where you go in front of the Board of Adjustment, which this applicant did in the summer of twenty twenty three. So that's why zoning wise, they are able to facilitate this expansion. This graphic shows the RV park and again, uh, it's the west side of the RV park is the expansion area. These are sewage lagoons up here in the northwest corner. They will be de- decommissioned and a park actually will be constructed in that area. There's another graphic showing the area of expansion on this western edge with the park being constructed. A Key Ranch Estates subdivision is immediately to the west and the existing RV park is on this eastern edge. There are a series of both uh, twenty six foot wide roads and twenty foot wide roads within the subdivision as part of the expansion area. The twenty six foot width meets the commercial standard in the subdivision regulations. There are a couple of variances, however, and one is to um, the curb and gutter requirement in the urban area. And the other is to the twenty six foot width standard for, and this applies to the the one-way roads that are only twenty feet wide. Staff is in support of both these variances because curb and gutter would be, it'd be sort of an isolated piece of curb and gutter improvement in this expansion area. We also support the twenty foot width uh, for the one-way roads because those roads meet fire code and it's not uncommon that RV parks actually have um, one-way streets, at least as a portion of their development. So again, the curb and gutter are supportive of that variance. Swales are used for existing drainage and on the road width variance, all roads meet emergency vehicle standards. Now, Thoroughbred Lane is the single way out of this development. It's this yellow road here. Brides access to Highway ninety three. Because this is in the wildland urban interface, technically this development needs to have two ways in and out. It only has the one to Highway ninety three. Found that there was really no reasonable second way that could be found out of the subdivision. It's essentially kind of landlocked, if you will, by other properties. And so we support the variance that would allow just that single way out to Highway ninety three. The last of the four variances is to permit a three foot wide walkway system, perimeter walkway system throughout the the edge of the RV park. And this is in lieu of providing sidewalks along each of the roads that are part of the expansion. The actual requirement, because this is in the urban area, is for an eight foot wide asphalt surface. Staff does recommend denial of this variance and we recommend instead installation of an eight foot wide asphalt trail rather than the three foot wide, single track gravel pathway that's proposed. This uh, was approved for city sewer connection. Eventually, the sewage lagoons in the northwestern corner will be filled in. Uh, this app or this development will connect to the Y water system eventually. And we do have a condition for confirmation of water rights for additional water connections. The water connection being proposed is actually to the system that was originally intended to The water connection being proposed is actually to the system that was originally intended to serve Running W Ranch. Which is now known as Missoula Meadowlands. This water system serves multiple developments. The original water right was intended for the number of units in Running W specifically, so we got very specific comments from both DQ. Missoula Public Health that additional connections and water rights to Y area subdivisions, including this one, need to be verified. So we have a distinct condition for that. And we feel that some of these comments are likely a response to the court case that. The order that came out in February is Upper Missouri Water Keepers v. Broadwater County. So the RV park has existing parkland and related facilities in the older portion of the development further to the east here. The existing parkland will cover the required dedication for phase one. And more parkland will be dedicated with phase two. Again, the park area is in this northwest corner here. We do have a recommended condition that county parks review the dedication with each phase. There's a buffering and screening requirement adjacent to. From the the western edge of the subdivision adjacent to any applicable development, and Oak Keefe Ranch Estates is immediately to the west. So both zoning and the subdivision regulations require buffering to happen, like a vegetative type of buffering. So we are recommending a condition that appropriate screening and buffering occur there against Oak Keefe Ranch Estates. We got comment from Fish Wildlife and Parks that bears occasionally do visit this area, it's within the bear buffer zone. Requiring bear-resistant containers by April tenth of twenty twenty-six. We felt because of the very specific comment that we got from FWP about one particular problem bear that. We would like to see bear-resistant garbage disposal methods sooner rather than later, so that's one of our recommending conditions. Just a summary of public comments. Um, there was a concern over the single way out because of the. The scale of your typical RV and the number of RVs that would have to make their way out to Highway ninety-three. Uh, there was also concern voiced over whether this is an all-year-round sort of operation versus a seasonal operation. Um, as far as our review of it, we consider it. As if it were fully used three hundred sixty-five days a year, although. May to October are the months where you see the most folks within an RV park. Uh, we also got comment from the developer of Oak Keefe Ranch Estates the West. Saying that Granite Peak has been a great neighbor to Oak Keefe Ranch Estates. And has upgraded and continued to maintain their RV park, and we wish them the best of luck in the future and hope that the county commissioners support. Their application. We got two new comments tonight, actually, late breaking. One was, I do agree that the RV park should be expanded, it's a great little park, however, the plan should include. Mandatory planting and maintenance of trees. And then the same individual commented that the connection to city sewer should be done as soon as possible and not delayed until phase two. Maybe Ron can clarify, but I think phase one must be connected to city sewer. I think the question is more, when will the sewage lagoons be decommissioned, and maybe we can talk about that. Our recommendations for approval. And I have a set of motions, again, there's four variance motions, and I can present the main motion whenever. You all are ready, I'll be available if you have any questions.
Great, uh, thanks, Tim. Is there a representative that wants to give a presentation or any comments?
It's okay, can I, I got just a couple of handouts, can I pass those around to folks?
What, Shannon?
My name is Ron, you are E W A R T, and I'm with DCI.
Thanks.
Everybody got one, all right. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here, I know it's late, I'll try to get to this quickly, I think there's only one issue to discuss. But I do want to go over a little bit of. Uh, history first, or a little bit of background, so this is a family business. Um, the owner, he actually lives in Ben, Oregon, but he's made other investments here in the Missoula area. Uh, running a campground is is what they like to do best, and his son, his name is Brody. So Dave Swisher's owner, his son Brody is the manager of the of the. Of the RV RV park. So they they purchased the property, it used to be called Jellystone RV Park, now it's Granite Peak RV Resort. They purchased it about two thousand, and since then, they've put in substantial improvements, they've paved. A lot of rows, they put in landscaping, they've built up the amenities, and. Uh, today, the amenities include a heated swimming pool, sixteen, nineteen-hole mini golf course, fitness center. Disc golf course, basketball court, fence, dog park, horseshoe pits, community picnic pavilion. Children's playground, hiking trails, fast wifi, laundromat, guest lounge, restrooms, and a convenience store and gift shop. So with all those amenities, you can call yourself an RV resort. In my opinion, and that's what it's called, it's called an RV resort, but of course, we call it RV park or whatever. They have some some quite strict rules, and those rules are included in my. In my packet, basically along with this, when people come in, they hand them to them. And and Brody goes around the RV park, riding his little golf course, golf cart. So when anybody's making any noise, breaking any rules whatsoever, it gets shut down like that, where they get, where they have to leave. I've been there many, many times, probably a hundred times or so. Last couple of years I've been working on this, and one thing I've noticed about this RV park is it's quiet, I mean, it's quieter than a normal residential development. Um, you go there, people pretty much go there and they sit, and they visit with each other, but it's very quiet, you very rarely see. Um, RVs out driving around, and if they are driving, they're going really slow, five miles an hour. And so it's a very orderly place, and. So the Swisher family, they want to make this very premier. RV resort. And one of those things that they're doing besides all these upgrades, and you know, they're continuing to pave and make it better, they want to get rid of the sewage. Sewage lagoons. Uh, these lagoons have, you know, back in, back in the early nineties, or whenever this was first done. The land application system was, oh, that's a cool way to go, you know, where your sewage goes to a pond and then you sprinkle it out on the fields and. Well, since then, DQ's decided they're not such a good thing anymore, um, this one is grandfathered in, it can continue to. Put more sewage in there, and it sits there, and I don't know, evaporates or whatever, but it's completely illegal, but. It's not, it's not a good thing to have in a, you know. In a new and upcoming neighborhood, you've got one hundred ninety-seven houses here in Oak Keefe, and you've got, you know, a lot of other development going on around. So it'd be really nice to get rid of those, and in my opinion, I think we're just fortunate that that Dave has come along. And purchased this property and is making all these improvements, including getting rid of the sewage lagoons and the sludge. That's going to take a tremendous amount of money to to get rid of those and turn it into a park. And to hook on the city sewer, I mean, it's, they charge you quite a bit of money in development fees and everything else, so it's a big, big investment, but. It's something that's that's worth it, that that'll be. A good benefit for the for the community. Um, a lot of the times I've been out there, I've never really smelled them. Uh, last time I was out there, it was raining pretty good, and and it started to not be a good thing to smell, so. So I think it's a great thing, and I hope that that people understand. The great investment that he's doing to get rid of these things and go on to city sewer. Uh, and there was the comment about the the phase one, phase two, so phase one will go on to city sewer. Uh, and then phase two is, that's part, the lagoon is in phase two, and that'll be taken out during phase two. And I might all be done at once, but just for good measure. You know, we do have have a phasing plan. Best, the best approach to this is to minimize the amount of construction. Or the timeline of construction, because during then, you know, you're not gonna. Have good relations with the people that want to come there and stay there, so it might be good just to get it all done at once, but we do have it phased. So we're in agreement with the staff report, appreciate Tim's, all of his efforts and so on on that. And so there was the condition, now if you look at the the very first page. And it says motions and conditions, so that's a direct take from page nineteen of the staff report, and what we are. Very, very much asking for, I mean, the owner, he thought I was kidding him when I, when I told, when I told him this and. It's just, it's a big blow, but, you know, I said, well, it's a recommendation, and it really stems from, from a flaw in the regulations. The the regulations that we use, um, I don't know if they derive from state law or. Why they don't allow for an RV park to be designed in the best way. Um, you know, RV park doesn't need curb and gutter, RV park, you know, it needs one-way streets. Um, and what it doesn't need is eight-foot walkways. The owner. And let's see, yes, you've got this on on here, so, so the owner is is part of the, you know, plans to in- increase. The amenities there on the property, he's proposed a three-foot wide, a paved walk, excuse me, a three-foot wide. Hard-packed gravel walkway around it, and there'll be landscaping along it, so it's a nice little thing for people to go. You know, they're staying there, they can go walk around the 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 trail, probably won't get a lot of people walking on it. I mean, there's miles and miles of paved, flat. Uh, roadways within this development, and, you know, to pave more than what's needed. I don't think is a is a good thing, because the more pavement on the ground, the the less percolation, at least in that location to the ground. The more albedo, you know, sun rays bouncing off, so. If we can keep that down to a minimum, that'd be great, uh, so. The request to bury from number three there, we propose that that would would be approved, that we would get that, that. Variance approved, because it's just like any other variance that that we requested, or at least the twenty-foot walkway. Or the twenty-foot one-way roads and curb and gutter, it's, again, it's the same thing, it's, it's. Us having to abide by. Standards that are set for. Uh, major subdivisions, and and mobile home courts. So if you go down to number six, um, you know, if you were to accept this, we could just, rather than eight-foot wide asphalt. Um, you could go with a three-foot hard-packed gravel, I mean, that would be a lot more. Uh, appealing and more aesthetically pleasing, and more in line with this particular type of development, which. This is a campground, and I know that the the regulations call it a. Um, you know, a major dense residential sub, some urban area subdivision, but that's not what it is. You can call a giraffe a lion, but it's still a giraffe, so so this is a campground, it's not. It's not a major subdivision or urban subdivision, and the regulations don't lump. Mobile home parks and RV parks together, and that is totally not fair. First of all, the the mobile home parks rules, I think are disparaging, they require you to have thirty feet in between trailers, but. Where I live, you have fifteen feet in between stick-built houses, but it doesn't make any sense, and. And then I, so if you wanted to make those changes, I got the strike house there.
So, may I just step in real quick, so for those at home, and I I guess maybe I wanna. I want to not lean on this document that we're looking at, um, because the folks at home do not have the opportunity to review this. So, uh, I think if you're willing to describe and. Say everything that's in here, which I don't know if you need to do that. Like, so far, we've talked about you're disagreeing with the, uh, the recommended denial of the. The condition for the eight-foot thing. Uh, but. I don't want to lean on this document, you you, if if there's other things that you want to bring up. You're gonna have to say them all out loud for the record and make sure that it's clear for the folks at home. Um, because there's two voting members and the public that don't have the opportunity to review this, so, does that make sense?
It it does make sense, I'm kind of old school, this is what we used to do it, um, people would show up and.
Totally get it, and it's, we get the hybrid meeting now, and so we gotta be fair for everybody, um, so, just wanted to say that.
Yeah, um, well, I mean, I just wanted to hand this out for for reference. Um, I I could go through it a little bit, but basically what, what I've done is I've taken the findings. And and have my own findings here that that, you know, that are contrary to the findings from. From the planning office, um, and they're and they're along the lines of what I was just stating, stating. You know, part of it also has to do with, uh, okay, the, the the findings talk about intermodal transportation. So, an eight-foot wide. I guess I probably shouldn't do this, but people can't see me, but it's this is eight-foot wide. It goes way up, this is, this is an eight-foot wide paved pathway. Um, a fire truck is eight feet wide, there's no need for an eight-foot wide paved pathway. Let's, let's say you're at Karas Park, where you've got. Bikes, walkers, strollers, all kinds of people, you know, public-type people. Um, and and you also have like, um, one of those up in the Little Rattlesnake, when you go into. The rattlesnake, we're doing this area, the recreation area, there's like an eight-foot trail there, but there's a lot of people. And they're often different walks of life, and they, uh, and they use it, and yes, it's intermodal. In this case, there's no intermodal needed, there might be occasionally, a couple of the people walking around. But, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot of people, and if you really want to get up and walk a bunch of you, there's, again, there's miles of flat. Pavement in the. Uh, the RV park itself. And, uh, so again, this was just meant to basically be an amenity. Um, let's see. If there were an eight-foot. Pathway built, okay, that would require significant cut and fill, you're talking additional, you know. Base course, cushion, asphalt, the equipment, uh, along the north end of the property, that's where the. Sewer main, the water main, there's a gas main, um, there's a lot of utilities in there. That would be impacted potentially, I mean, by. By an asphalt trail, but by an eight-foot asphalt trail, so. Again, we're looking for a more rustic feel, something that is, uh, that that would be expected in a private campground. The the condition also talks about putting a twenty-foot easement on top of it, well, let's say if you did, okay. Then you'd have a twenty-foot easement around, but where would it start, where would it end, how would the public be able to to get there? Um, and then why would you put a public easement on a private piece of property unless there was a public? Need and benefit, and there is a public need and benefit, and and Tim and I talked about this, and. As well as Jackson, I believe it was.
Probably Nick.
Nick, yeah, with Nick's, Nick, and we were talking about the possibility of of a of a walkway, and that's kind of one of the reasons why I had. Passed this out, but I've also got this in my packet, and it's just a, it's just a picture from the Missoula County Property Information System. And you can see the trails, and, I mean, there is a possibility of a trail up to the town pump. You know, and that which could come maybe originate from the common area at Oak Keefe Estates, and our our client, you know, he's a very reasonable person. He said, yeah, that's that's not a good idea, but the problem is, you'd have to get some connectivity through town pump's property, they got, they got that big triangular piece of. Ground there that they might, I don't know, do something else with later at another time, but there is a good chance for some connectivity there. And in that case, he would put a twenty-foot. And in that case, he would put a twenty-foot easement over it. But after talking about it quite a bit, Nick decided, you know, right now isn't the time to try to push for this, but let's, let's keep this in mind for the future. So in that case, that, that, that would make sense. But the eight-foot walkway around it does not make sense in any way other than to try and be congruent with regulations that don't make sense for RV parks. Because remember, we haven't done bringing any RV parks. I know there was one up in Sealy. And, but there's not many RV parks in Missoula, and that's why this person wants to make a good situation here. And one more thing I wanted to point out. So the walkway would go around most of the existing part. And, but along the far, the east boundary, okay, that's just pavement. It's like twenty-eight feet of pavement over to the east property line. So the walkway would, would be paved at least, I mean, it would just join in and people would just walk along the walkway. But then also, how can you require a requirement for something that's not part of this proposal? I mean, this expansion is technically separate from the existing. So we're not reviewing the existing. But he did propose to put this walkway around. And I, there were some pictures on one of the drawings that's in the packet of the landscape architects rendering of how this is gonna look. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna wind a little bit. And shit, even this person with a wheelchair could use it because it's gonna be level for the most part. Or I think it was called a class-one trail or something. Maybe similar to like what you see out, out at Playfair Park. You know, they have some of those gravel walkways, and they, they work great. And it's, it's probably better than, you know, pavement. But like I say, in this case, we just want to keep the rustic feel as much as possible for a, for a private campground. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions before we go into public comment? I see Rick has had his hand up for a little bit, so let's start with Rick.
Yeah, just a question. I mean, we can't see that, and aren't exhibits supposed to be submitted with the packet so that we can all see them?
Rick, sorry, I had you on mute. Can you say that again?
He's referring to a document that wasn't submitted with the packet. Don't exhibits have to be submitted so we can all see them? I think you made the point that we can't see it here online, but-
Yeah, I mean, I think the gist of the packet is, is it's refuting, it's, sorry, refuting's not the right word. It is requesting that we accept the variance of the three-foot gravel walkway in lieu of the eight-foot gravel walkway. Sorry, eight-foot paved walkway. And that it comes in a number of different forms in here. So that's why I just wanted to describe it, and we're not going to use the handout at all.
Got it.
Okay, from there, we had Lynn.
Okay, my question was, there was a statement somewhere about the parks going to county? Could you explain that to me? Because this looks like private property, and like you're talking about it being a private resort. So what does that look like? And would that also include the current parking designation, which has what, the pool and all?
Yeah, this, the parkland dedication will be, it'll all be a private entity still. So, but there is a dedication requirement for RV parks. So there's plenty of extra leftover, if you will, from the original dedication for phase one to be accounted for. But phase two will need a little bit of the, what you see in the northwest corner where the sewage lagoons are. It will need a little bit of that park to, to be enough park to meet the regulations, but it'll be private.
So it's private, but it's, it's to have the development, you need X amount of recreational land?
Yeah, yeah, it's basically-
I thought it was like a dedication.
Yeah, it's a, it's basically-
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
I have one other question. I, I noticed this, this road on the map, this other road, is that just a private road? And that's not able to be the second egress? It's in the middle of the property heading south?
I, I'm unaware of, oh, I guess I can't see it. I'm just looking at my own, my own driver's picture. I'm, I don't, I've driven around the perimeter one time, but I don't know what that is, to be honest.
Sure, okay. No, it's, it's like an old service road, and it goes up to, there's five acres. We just got the Tucar mine property that's right just north of the, the town pump. So it just goes up there and I guess it goes all the way to the town pump property.
So it's not possible to have that be your second, or an emergency?
It doesn't seem like it. I mean, the one that I thought actually had a little bit of promise was to Malametos to the north, which I think Ron is familiar with. But actually, that egress to the north was meant to provide egress the other direction from Malametos to the RV parks since that, that owner used to own both these developments. So it's not really a legitimate egress to the north. It's across his private property. So really, we couldn't find any other really legitimate way out, especially for RVs to get out.
Thank you.
We're gonna go with Peter and then Tim.
I, I'm wondering if this is, number one, the best use of the planning board's time and part of our purview, to pick apart, you know, recommendations that the planning office has come to us with, where the, the participant is in real disagreement with. You know, we could sit here and argue each point one by one and pick this apart, but I don't think that's something we should be doing. I'd much rather see this go back to the planning board and the applicant to work out the differences between them before it comes to us. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
I, I do, and I'd just like to keep us on track with just questions for right now, and then we can have a discussion on the motion once we get there. So does anybody have any, because we haven't even gotten into public comment yet, so.
I apologize.
On the table. Starting with water rights, more clarification. Then going on to the phasing, more clarification, when and how, what triggers it? Moving on to the second access, here adjacent. I'm wondering if you can perfect that access to the north to, if those three start to residential quality? I wonder some feedback from Public Works, whether that's a secondary access or not. I, I agree that one access, you've got over, you've got one hundred and sixty-seven sites. And during the summer, that's at least a hundred and fifty vehicles, three hundred people, maybe up to five hundred people at one time in a very urban setting. This is not just a campground in an urban setting. I think all those questions, in my opinion, need to be answered. And then the, then the pathway around, we can talk about, is that, is that a good idea? And how much of it? I think some of it is appropriate. There's a lot of questions, I think, that need to be answered if, if we're gonna make an action tonight. And, and we might, you know? I think it's gonna be tough for the applicant to go to the commissioners and show, I got all these, all these questions answered. We're trying to get the answers here, so.
Rick, do you have a clarifying question?
Yeah, I, I kind of, it's similar to Dave's question. And one is, is the access right now right of way through someone else's land? I too have concern about only one, one access to that park in Wooey. And I've got a question about, you know, I mean, I don't think packed gravel is handicapped accessible. Is the requirement for the paved have anything to do with that? So.
Do you want me to answer that?
Uh, yes. If I want to be to answer it.
So the, the whole idea is, you know, where do people need to go? Point A to point B? I mean, they're in, they're in, they're in an RV park. There's really not a need to have this trail around it because people can walk, I mean, realistically, they can walk from one RV to another. They can walk on the, on these flat paved roads. They can roll a wheelchair on it or whatever. The trail around it is an amenity for people who want to get out and walk. Or, I mean, I'm a hundred percent sure that a person, most, well, not everybody, but most folks in a wheelchair can negotiate a flat. And when we say a hard, I mean, it's hard-packed gravel, so don't imagine a bunch of, you know, loose gravel on it. I mean, it's something that, that can be negotiated with any type of wheels.
My question was, my question was for Tim, so.
Yeah, well, I asked, you wanted me to answer it.
Tim, is there, I, I think the question is regarding what kicks us into needing this? And what's the, what would the typical use be, I guess, in a subdivision? You and I had this discussion earlier about typically sidewalks adjacent to the road surface would be required. And in lieu of that, you are able to provide essentially this ring pathway. Is that generally correct?
Yeah, the regulations allow for a standalone path in lieu of your typical sidewalk. It's clear, like, a sidewalk along every roadway is not appropriate here. And so we feel that this is actually a really good alternative. That it has to be large enough that it, it creates a system, basically, a walkway system throughout the project. We understand that the eight, the eight-foot requirement in the urban area is pretty substantial. I think, I think somebody also brought up, and Rick may have asked a question about ADA compliance. The regulations do require ADA compliance. I think if we were to have a conversation about possible changes, it would be more a width issue as far as what we would be willing to compromise on. And these are just recommendations, obviously, but we would want to see an asphalt surface. That's really, the regulations don't require, don't really have a category for a gravel single track, which is what this is. I, I understand what, what Ron's trying to, to advocate for. There's not really a category for it, for a standalone trail. Asphalt's really the kind of minimum hard surface that's required. So that would be our recommendation, but again, these, you take that recommendation and go in a different direction.
Rick, did that get you enough?
Yeah, I think it did. Would five foot meet the ADA requirement? I know, I mean, I looked it, I looked it up. I know, I know gravel does not handicap accessible, either even hard-packed, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I am not an ADA expert by any means, but my understanding is that five foot is kind of the minimum that you need for two people to walk side by side. So that might be something to consider.
And the ADA requirement is that two wheelchairs pass side by side?
That I'm not certain of.
Do we have any other clarifying questions? We need to open ourselves up for public comment here. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
This path is going on the new section only, or the entire property?
I think it goes around the whole perimeter of the property.
The proposed path does, except for that east end.
With that, yeah.
Oh, where it would just join the asphalt.
Okay, we're gonna open it up for public comment one more time. We've chased everybody out of the room, so if anybody has public comment, they'll be coming online. And we'll just give ourselves a couple of minutes here to see if anybody has anything. All right, I'm not seeing anybody other than people directly involved in this conversation online. So we will go ahead and close the public comment period. And continue discussion, or if we have no more questions, then I'd entertain a motion. Does anybody have questions?
I don't think we have to offer motion to a specific part of, can I? Or do we need to put a motion and break it down?
I think we need to, we need to take the variances. I would suggest that we have to take, I would, I would suspect that we have a variance that's going to have some discussion. And so if somebody wants to start with that one, I don't necessarily see a need to take these in order.
So to this number variance.
Actually, maybe, maybe there's a couple of these that, I think we need to take these one by one. Actually, the variant, or the variances.
That's what I was-
Variance variance number three. Of the eight-foot wide paved surface. I would offer that, as discussed, an appropriate five-foot paved surface would be appropriate and that would amend the, the recommendation from staff. I just want to put that on the table.
Okay.
Does he need a second for the amendment?
Well, can we? I don't think we need to amend a motion. I think we need a motion for what you're suggesting. So, because these are only recommended motions, you get to make a motion however you want to make it. So maybe we can just start with number one, if somebody would like to motion number one. And we can have a discussion, and then when we get there, Dave, you can make your-
I'll make a motion for number one, that the request to vary from table three point four point seven requiring twenty-six-foot wide subdivisions and roads be approved.
Okay, so we have a recommended motion from Derek on motion number one. Do we have a second? Dave seconds. Is there any discussion on this motion? I'll just say that I intend to support this, it seems quite reasonable. Anybody else? Uh, can we do a, just an up and down vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to number two. Can I have a motion for number two, please? Can I have a motion for number two, please?
At the request to vary section three point four point seven point three. Quiring curb and gutter along subdivision roads be approved.
Moved by Derek, do you have a second? Seconded by Dave, any discussion on recommended motion number two? Removing the. Requirement for curbing gutter. Again, I'll say I intend to support this as well, it seems pretty straightforward in an RV park. Any other discussions? We'll just do an up and down vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to number three.
Can I ask a question real quick? Um, and I will, I will defer to Dave Loomis or staff on this. Do we have to vote on the recommended motion first? And deny it before we amend it or not?
I believe that we can.
You can substitute motions, yeah, you can recommend whatever you want.
We, we can just craft this motion however we want, and I think that Dave's suggestion is, is that we just sub out eight feet with five feet. Is that correct? Okay, and maybe.
Yeah, so. Sorry, Shane. Uh, my, my, my question, I keep on trying to not ask it, but I feel like I have to ask it, like just. Process wise, what does that, what, what happens? Does our updated motion go to? The commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
Alongside with the, you know, staff? Motion, meaning staff is going to present it, and they're going to say, this was what we suggested. But the planning board suggested something else, what then happens? Like. Like, which one wins, if you will, or, or does? The commissioners, they can make up their own, like, how, how does, like, I'm curious how this works.
I mean, the commissioners could, in theory, get a completely different presentation in a week and have completely different motions, but they would be able to see the record of this conversation, I suppose. So they would see our recommendation, our recommended motion. And whether or not it was approved. And Tim could still go back and say he's still recommending eight feet, and they could. Take Tim's recommendation, they could take our recommendation, they could. Do their own thing. I think is. Um, where we're at.
And, and then, but. At the, okay, all right.
I'll, I'll try the motion.
Can I, before we motion? I think the, Tim, you have behind us, but.
I was just gonna recommend if number three is going in the direction of a five foot wide asphalt. Trail. I would recommend that you. Recommend conditional approval of the variance. And then amend condition number. Six to specify a five foot wide surface instead of an eight foot.
Here's what I would maybe like to do. I would like to just take this as Tim has it worded. And just have a note that we had this discussion, and I would like Tim and the applicant to work this out before it goes to the commissioners, hopefully. And come up with something that it can be. You know, that they can both agree to, so that's, rather than making it up here on the spot, I'd like. Them to work it out if we can. Um.
I think I support that into Peter's comment earlier, I'm not sure that. Like, our expertise, this isn't our purview to. On the spot, come up with a specific recommendation.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I was going to, but now I'm not sure, so.
Yeah, that's funny.
It's true.
I mean, I would, I, I mean, I would word it as that we. Recommend approval of the request to vary from that table. Requiring a five foot wide paved surface for the standalone non-motorized trail. Instead of the eight foot recommended. Would that be a motion or not?
That, that can be a motion. Okay, is that your motion, Rick?
Sorry, so I, I like your idea. Shane, can we just not? Have a recommendation on three at all? And basically have a note that says. We would like them, like, because. To your point earlier, Tim could go back and completely change this for the next presentation. So, you know, can't we just treat this like a tie and have no recommendation?
I think we need to vote on a.
I just made a motion, so.
A motion. Yeah, so Rick, Rick has a motion on the table. I believe we, we have a motion from Rick on the table that is stating that we are.
Recommending approval of the request. To vary from table three point four, point nine, point four. Requiring a five foot wide paved surface for the standalone, non-motorized trail. Instead of the eight foot wide surface proposed.
Okay, we have a second from Lynn. Uh, discussion?
Uh, what will a yes vote and a no vote mean? Will a yes vote means that we approve the five? Yes vote is for the motion.
Okay.
No, the, the way, the way it was read is that we are recommending, did you say, did, did you say recommend approval of the request or deny of the request?
Approval.
Okay.
For five foot. So if we deny it. Then. Neither one goes, if we approve it, we approve it as motions made, we can make alternate motions too.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yeah, sorry, um. I don't feel comfortable making, like, I agree with Peter and Derek. I don't know what the ADA requirements are, like. I, I don't feel comfortable making spot recommendations. After the staff has already considered this. I think it's a real slippery slope, uh, we tried to do this with. You know, other things in the past, and it, and it's, it hasn't. It's been dicey, yeah, so I. I'm gonna, I, I will vote against this on principle of I don't think that we're qualified to make these decisions.
Dave, you have a comment?
I have a substitute motion.
Uh, we have to vote on this motion.
First, yeah.
Yep.
Well, he can amend the motion.
He can ask for an amendment, an amendment, and we'd have to vote on that request for amendment.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, any other discussion? I'm in total agreement with Tom here, um, I intend to not support the motion on the table. Um, with that, we'll have to do a roll call vote, please.
Roll call and vote. Lynn Davis. Derek Canwisher. Toon Pham.
No.
Dave Loomis. Peter Benson.
No.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Shane Morrissey.
No.
And the motion fails with four noes and three yeses.
So do we want to try a motion for the eight foot?
Uh, that would be a possibility.
I think we've done our job. There was a motion that we denied. And we, I think we should make a note that we encourage. Tim and the applicant to come up with an alternative. We can't come up with an alternative.
Yep. Uh. Moving on then, if we're in agreement to move along. Move on to number four, does somebody want to make a motion on?
Where, I'm sorry, so you're gonna, you're gonna go ahead and say with the non-motorized path shall be. Within a twenty foot wide public pedestrian easement? I, I just want, there, there's more to that, um. Condition number six, there's an easement.
Does that come later?
Okay, okay, well, I guess.
Well, we're, we're only voting on variances for right now, that would be a.
Condition.
Condition of approval that would become with the subdivision approval. So we're moving on to variance number four, does somebody have a? Somebody like to make this motion?
I will motion that the request to vary from section three point four point six point three. Requiring two points of egress in a wildland urban interface, will we be approved?
We have a motion from Derek for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Two seconds. Discussion?
Put on the table that I. Encourage the applicants, there's a subdivision behind here, I don't know if it's been already plotted or not. There's an opportunity. Uh, for a secondary access out of there, I'd like, and, and. Can I just, um, request that the staff and applicant together, but go to the commissioners and, and make some findings, this is what we found. The certainty about why we can or cannot have a secondary access, I'm really worried about that, five hundred people. Can be living there one night. If this is an urban campground. Need a secondary access, that's just a more of a policy statement.
Any other discussion? Uh, can we do a roll call vote, please? Tim, did you hear that?
Sorry, I did not, um, I go yes.
We're not hearing anything.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Dave Loomis.
There we go.
Peter Benson.
Yes.
Rick Hall.
No.
Shane Morrissey.
Yes.
And the motion passes with four yeses and three noes.
Great.
Made it through our variances, uh, we have another. Thing to vote on? Okay. We're almost there. Uh, does anybody want to make our? So we don't have any, we're not changing any conditions. We're good to go with the motion as presented, if somebody would like to make that motion, correct? I'm really happy.
Yeah, you're good to go, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't do anything to screw you up, too bad, here, okay. Uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
I can, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of Granite Peak RV Park subdivision. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Derek seconds. Discussion?
This discussion. Um. As I understand this motion, it would be okay to vote for it. And the, uh, recommended variances or any conditions that might be modified are separate from that. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other discussion?
I'm maybe just tired, but. If we say yes, we approve the fact that there's this increase of. About fifty percent that you have recommended, okay.
We're recommending approval to the county commissioner.
Correctioners.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? We do a roll call vote, please?
Um, I might just.
Sorry, go ahead, go, go ahead, Rick.
Wanted to be on the record, um, I'm in favor of approval, I'm just not in favor. Of some of the conditions, so. Overall, I'm gonna vote yes.
Can you point out which conditions you are not in favor of, are they conditions or are they variances?
Variances, variances, yes.
So you've been on the, you're on the record.
I'm on the record as not, not liking the woo, the woo wee and not liking the, the paths, so.
Okay. Dave, you feel the same, you're, okay, great. And so, so it's, okay, we're on the record disagreeing with some of the things, but, okay, uh, may, so. We don't have, we haven't had a motion yet.
No, we didn't get a motion.
We have the motion.
And it's a.
And it's a, we're in discussion. We were going to, it's late. Uh, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote, Lynn Davis. Yeah. Derek Canwisher.
Yes.
Toon Pham.
Yes.
Dave Loomis.
Yes.
Peter Benson.
Yes.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Shane Morrissey.
Yes.
And it is unanimous, the motion passes.
Shane, you're doing a great job of adapting, I just want to say that.
All right. God, I hope we don't have anything else to talk about, um, that's it for, uh. We made it through our three, thank you very much for being here, um, thanks for hanging with us. Um, that ends our hearings tonight, um. Communications and special presentations. I don't think we have anything there. Uh, Toon, do we have a committee report?
No.
Cool, anybody else have a committee report? Nope. No old business, no new business. Um, comments from planning board members, uh. I guess just to reiterate. Uh, there's a memo sent out on, um. Upcoming hearings, uh, and potentially some extra meetings, uh, one of which is for August, one is. Because of the election, actually, I think, in November, in November, so. So, um, please respond to attendance polling and attend when you can. Any other comments from planning board members?
Yeah.
Eric?
Um, I mean, I think this is more comments section, right?
Hmm.
Generally discussion is, there was the last. I think on board meeting where we went late. Um. Before we get into that, I think that's a week away, is that correct?
Obviously, that's fine.
On the sixth, yes, so. Are we? Going to go through presentations again? For that hearing, like, how is that gonna work?
Well, I can, from what I know, I don't believe he's gonna go through the whole presentation again, I think it's gonna be where we left off of, which was with the motions.
Right. So I'd clarify that.
Yeah, and he'll be, Dave will be going first, too.
I believe the staff has an obligation. To summarize for us, and I hope they do a better job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Supposed to say.
Any other comments? From planning board members? All right, thanks, everybody, thanks for hanging with us. Hope it wasn't too bad out there, and we'll adjourn.
Thanks, Shane, you.